I feel like that all council members are present and their adrenaline is good, heart rate's good, with the exception of, well, I don't want to say what that sounds wrong. Councilmember Blair is not with us. That is not a commentary on his heart condition either. His heart's actually very strong. Just check the records of the race this last weekend. He did good. We will start with our opening ceremony with a pledge of allegiance. And Vice Chair White, if you'll lead us in that.
Please rise if you are able and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Any acknowledgements from the council? Okay. Up next, we have approval of minutes for the work session and regular meeting of February 20th, 2024. Councilmember Graff.
Chair, I have reviewed those minutes and to the best of my recollection, find them to be accurate.
Great. We get a motion?
A motion to accept.
Second.
You have a motion to approve the minutes by Councilmember Graff and a second by Councilmember Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. All right. We have joining us today Camille Cook, the committee chair for the Marshall White Center Advisory Committee, to present on the sunset report for the Marshall and White Center Committee.
I love your shirt, Camille.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Chair Ritchie and council, it is wonderful to be with you tonight to talk about the Marshall and White Advisory Center Committee. We want to highlight our accomplishments and the activities that have taken place over the last four years and to outline the committee's priorities going forward. As a new committee, our focus has been on what the community wanted in a center and if the current center could be rehabilitated to accommodate those needs. Over the past four years, we have completed a survey, supported community events and classes, given advice and input on the design of the new center, held a closing ceremony prior to the demolition of the old center, and broke ground on the new center. Our first action as a committee was reviewing the building assessment with VCBO to see if the old center could be remodeled to accommodate the needs of the community. We worked with VCBO to create a survey to receive feedback and suggestions from the community. To reach community members during the pandemic, we targeted the areas around the center and went door to door with volunteers to canvass the area and meet with residents. We worked with community partners to reach residents at community events, taped flyers to doors, included the survey link in the At Your Service newsletter, and took every opportunity to talk to people about the survey and the Marshall and White Center. It was so fun to meet people and watch their faces light up as they shared their experiences with the center with us. It was a light spot during a time of isolation and helped bring us together for a common goal. Once the initial feedback was received, we virtually toured other community centers and worked with VCBO to develop two concept plans. Open houses were held in March 2021 at the Marshall and White Center and at Ben Lomond High in addition to virtual meetings. We canvassed the areas surrounding the open houses prior to the events to make sure the community was invited to attend and included the links in the At Your Service newsletter and emailed everyone who had included an email on the survey. The Ben Lomond High Open House was held on a Saturday during the junior jazz season and on a day that Ben Lomond played Ogden High in basketball.
And beat them.
Yes. So we were able to receive a lot of feedback on the designs and amenities. We asked people to place stickers next to the amenities that were most important to them. So we had teenagers and kids interested too in telling us what they thought was important to include in the center. The committee has had the opportunity to support various community events at the Marshall and White Center and other locations since the demolition. It's been fun to see the events change from being held at the Marshall White Center to being moved to Union Station during the transition and rebuild. This is the Thanksgiving Community Mill and at Union Station the past year, and then the Christmas Mill the last time at Marshall White and this year at Union Station. We appreciate being part of the community and representing the city at these events to bring the community together. The Marshall and White Center offers a variety of classes for both youth and adults. All of these classes have continued at various community partner locations during the construction of the new center. It's fun to see all of the people participating in these classes. So the classes are currently being held at satellite locations throughout the community, including Ben Lomond High School, Weber County Library, Kitchen Needs, Project Success, and Golden Hours. We appreciate the partnerships and the ability to continue to offer these classes during the rebuild. The satellite locations are working well and allow the classes to reach more members of the community throughout the city. The satellite locations will be evaluated as permanent class locations once the center is reopened. Once it was determined that the old center was dilapidated beyond reasonable repair, it was determined a new building would need to be built, and that is when those classes were sent to different satellite locations. We worked with VCBO to create and design the renderings that were presented to the council and to community at various events. To best utilize the property, it was determined that keeping the building footprint in a similar location to the old center would allow for use of the park as a soccer field to complement the field house and allow the city to maintain the existing Jazz post tension basketball court. This layout resulted in the need to close and demolish the old center and allow for construction of the new center. This is the drawing of the second floor of the building. This includes a track over the basketball courts, a fitness area, and a cardio fitness room. And this is the main floor layout that includes basketball courts, a field house, pools, pottery rooms, and classrooms. This is a rendering of what the exterior of the building will look like when construction is completed. This is, on the left, you can see the Jazz post tension basketball court that's existing, and then the new Marshall and White Community Center will be in the back. There's soccer fields and then the roll up garage type doors will be the field house. So they'll be able to be open to connect those two spaces. This is a waiting area and a check in area, the security checkpoint to restrict access in the center. We are incorporating art throughout the center and have included roll up doors to create large community meeting areas. So all of the doors on the bottom will be able to be rolled up and have one big open space. This also includes a teaching kitchen. So we'll be able to do demonstrations there and teach people new cooking techniques. There are lots of classrooms that will be included, and they all have lots of light coming into them. This is the basketball courts. You can see there's quite a few, and up above, there's a walking track so that parents can walk around the track while they wait for their kids at basketball practice. The pool will have three main areas. There's a lap pool area, an area for them to do swimming lessons, and then a play area. And you can see up above, you'll be able to view the pool area from the fitness areas. So again, if kids want to come and take swimming lessons, the parents can go upstairs and work out while they wait. This is a rendering of the fitness area and that upper tracker on the basketball courts and field house. This is a cardio fitness room. One of my personal favorite events at the Marshall White Center was attending the closing ceremony for the old center and hearing the stories and memories of everyone who has attended the Marshall and White Community Center that were shared. The speakers all had a connection to the center, and the community members came to say goodbye to the building that they had spent so much time in, many of whom have been going to the center since it opened in 1968. Demolition of the old building began last summer, along with the groundbreaking of the new center. The construction is underway and is now vertical. If you've gone by in the past week or so, we anticipate the tresses will be in over the next few weeks. The current priority for the committee is focusing on Marshall and White's legacy. As we were focused on community outreach over the past few years, we found that we were reeducating the public on why the center was named Marshall and White. What an incredible person he was and all that he gave to our community. So we want to ensure that that legacy is never lost again. We are working with the arts committee to select artists that will help with this legacy. We had over 180 people respond to the RFP to create art in and around the facility to help tell the story of his legacy. The weather has been challenging, but we anticipate the new center will open in spring of 2025. Even though the original sunset date has passed, the committee is currently still having quarterly virtual meetings while the center's closed, and will reevaluate the meeting center when we get closer to reopening. We also hope to expand class offerings when the new facility is open. We, as a committee, appreciate the staff support that we have received. Ed and Stacy especially have been incredibly helpful in providing information, keeping the committee informed, and helping to facilitate meetings and events. We also appreciate the expertise of VCBO, especially Brent and Whitney, as they helped us to create functional facilities that incorporates natural light and open welcoming fillings in the areas to come together as a community, and we appreciate the amenities that they were able to include in this space while also honoring Marshall and White's legacy. I am truly grateful for the opportunity to have been able to serve on the Marshall and White Center Advisory Committee. I visited the center often when I was an employee of the city to better understand the budget and capital needs of the facility, and it has been such a unique perspective to go from helping to recommend funding repairs like the gym dividers and flooring, the basketball hoops and backboard, the roof repairs, new bleachers, to seeing that we've preserved this community center and Marshall and White's legacy for the community well into the future, and we've provided a place for people to gather together and create new memories and a lasting legacy for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Camille. What a great presentation. Does any council members have any comments or questions they'd like to ask?
I of course have a question. I'm sorry.
Of course, yeah.
Well, thank you for your service and everyone else that's been on the committee involved. I really appreciate it. I was curious. I remember at one time we talked about having remnants of the building, like the bricks and stuff that maybe people could purchase. I don't really remember whatever happened with that.
Welcome, Ed. And if you'll just state your name for the record and people listening online can hear who you are.
I'm Ed Fridge, the Recreation Manager. So what we did is we gave the bricks to the NAACP and Project Success that they could use it as a fundraiser for a scholarship in Marshall and White's name to be able to give out at Weber State.
And so where, do you know where we could go to find the information, or should we, we can ask Ms. Betty later or something? Oh, I don't know if that's, sorry.
Yeah. Please come on up, Ms. Betty, and introduce yourself and answer.
I almost went home.
Sorry.
We're so glad you came.
We have to go to the council meeting.
Yeah, you show up and you get on the menu.
So we're working through that process to set up guidelines for the scholarship program, and we want to be able to start that fairly soon so that by the time the center opens, we'll have funds developed and ready for students to be able to get scholarships if they can't afford it because we don't know what that fee schedule may be and other programs that Ogden City Recreation offers. And as you know, Marshall and White, at the time of his death, was president of the NAACP. And so we see it very fitting that we do something to continue to honor him, not only in the building itself, but in the programs and services that get provided. And Ron White has since become a member of our Project Success Board as well. So we're keeping him close and tied with what we're doing and making sure he approves of those things that we're trying to do as well.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. We all know you, but could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Betty Sawyer. I am the co-founder of Project Success Coalition and president of our local NAACP Ogden branch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure some people would want to help fund those scholarships. Would they just eventually look on the NAACP website or something?
Yes, they will. That information should be up before Juneteenth.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I'll make my comment now. I think that it's fitting that we're looking at the extension of the sunset, extending this committee. As we go into really areas that we haven't ventured into for quite some time, like the general plan, it will be really great to be able to reach out to our committees, like the Marshall White Center Committee, that learned how to do engagement. And it will be really, I think it'll be fitting to hopefully engage that committee as well in areas that maybe we don't always get to engage. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's exciting to see the building come along. You know, it'll be great to see that when it's completely done. We do have the action on the agenda. There's a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance 2024-6 amending Section 3146 of the Ogden Municipal Code to extend the sunset provision to April 30th of 2026 by Councilmember Chaburka and a second by Councilmember Myers. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye. And that passes. All right. Thank you very much. Up next, we have, this is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council on any topic. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please. And if you're online, you can raise your hand. Star six to raise your hand. Star nine, once you, star nine to raise your hand.
Chair Ritchie, I'm so sorry. I just noticed, because I hadn't seen who the participants were online, but I think there's some advisory committee members here, and then I also saw some were online. So I don't know. I just want to say thank you so much to all of you for joining. That's all.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Okay, we have a couple online. Let's start online with Angel Castillo.
You might want to change your timer to three. Okay. I didn't know if you saw.
Okay.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. It's exciting to hear that we have progress at the Marshall White Center, and I really appreciated a lot of the work that we're doing as a city with regards to code. And that's actually what I wanted to speak to tonight, is some of the comments in the work session with regards to flex space. I think it's a great idea that we're updating for flex industrial, but there's a couple of things that, as a former planning commissioner, I really appreciate Councilman Graff bringing up with regards to flex industrial. And flex industrial is generally something adaptable, usually one story. And here's the key piece, usually with movable walls, high ceilings, and open floor layouts, meaning it can accommodate light manufacturing machinery, warehouse, lab, office, or retail. And flex spaces are usually shorter than traditional industrial. I think there's a key point that is missing, and that has to do with calling out for clear span construction. And clear span construction is important, especially as we are moving into a really uncertain time period with regards to office space. And it's also based on some case studies that I've read and the cities that I've lived in where eight story buildings that record companies bought and were encompassed a half a block were cheaper to demolish because they couldn't move walls and create flexible space. So it's very important, if you're going to have flex space, that that space should be flexible, especially with what's happening in the economy. And I'd like to list up a comment that our president of the U.S. Treasury said, there's going to be bank failures. And that was said on March 8th by Federal Reserve Chair Jerome Powell. And it's because of declining values and defaults in commercial real estate loan portfolios, and office space is a big part of that. It has to do with the pandemic. So I'm really happy that you all tabled it and wanted to see what actual code was going to be before you wrote on it. I very much appreciate that. But let's consider that we don't know what office space is going to be. And if we're building new construction, it's important to allow as many uses as possible and clear span construction. And I'd also like to list up what other cities are doing with regards to their flex space and being inclusive of physical activities like gyms and allowing artists to be able to.
Thank you. Thank you. Up next, we also have online Heath Sato.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. First off, I to support the creation of flex zoning in the city as discussed today in the work session. I find it a bit ironic, though, that the zone will not allow any smells detectable at all outside the building while we still have a business here that regularly stinks up the entire city. But that's a discussion for another day. Second, as you know, the brown ice cream building was sold recently to a Realtor who misrepresented the size of that building by half when you were presented the value by our recently departed director of CED several years ago. That Realtor is a business partner of the person who purchased the building for the undervalued price. Six weeks ago, I started asking you all about the legal responsibilities of the new owner. Last week, an answer was put aside yet again, and so I'm sure you can understand, I'm starting to have a touch of deja vu about the previous administration. So I really hope that can be remedied tonight. I'm just going to read my exact words from last week to refresh the city attorney's memory. Quote, "Last time I spoke, I had asked specifically whether the new owner who had assessed the value of that building, I asked if they were legally bound, like the previous owner, to follow the guidelines in that contract. The city attorney said they have expressed their commitment to follow the requirements of the prior owner, but that's not a legal requirement. I wanted to know if there was an actual legal requirement, not just an expressed commitment. Also, I'd like to see them held to the timelines that we originally laid out that was already delayed for a year. This is blight, and the whole reason we're doing these things this way without a bidding process was to get rid of the blight quickly, and now it's more blighted than ever." That's the end of what I said last week. And I wanted to clarify, the reason this matters is that if the RDA is making agreements with developers that have very specific requirements of that developer, and those contracts can be entirely overridden by merely handing over the building to their own business partner, then I hope you can agree that we need better legal contracts than we've been using for our RDA/ CRA deals. That's why it matters. That's all for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening. Teresa Bramwell. I always love listening to Angel and Keith. So tonight, what they started talking about, because I've had a, I met the owner of this brown ice cream building. I contacted him on Facebook, and I have a whole conversation that we had. I specifically asked him what his plans were with the building, because I didn't know anything about this building. I didn't know who owned it. I just have heard the talk happen in this meeting. And his response was, well, I'm not doing anything with it until the interest rates come down, but do you have a suggestion of what you would like to see happen with it? And I said, no, I'm not the owner of it. I assumed that the owner would have an idea what they wanted to do with it. And in the course of probably 12 or 16 back and forth conversations with him on Facebook, he couldn't come up with any ideas for what to do with that building. So I'm wondering why he owns it. So he can just hold it and sell it to the next guy for a profit in a year when prices go up? I don't know, but Keith wants to know, so maybe you should find out. And then to add on to what Angel said, I definitely, wholeheartedly agree with having flexible zoning options for properties. The property I currently own in Ogden is not zoned anything like what it was built to be. So my home is a home. It's always been a home. I've lived in it and I've rented it since I've owned it as a home. And then also on the same property, I have a commercial duplex, but the property is zoned neighborhood commercial. So I've had a for rent sign up in this building for probably years. I don't know exactly how many years, but it's got my phone number on it. So probably every two weeks, I get another inquiry about the for rent sign. And the latest two, which has been in the last two weeks, one of them was for a barber shop and another one was for a beauty salon. And I said, great, because my property's own neighborhood commercial, and there's about three uses for neighborhood commercial, a beauty salon, a church, or brand new retail, or maybe an office. So anyway, this beauty salon should have been allowed. I've told probably 25 people to go to Ogden City and ask about a business license, and zero people in years have returned to me with being able to get a business license to open a business in my building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Okay. All right. I don't know what else to, I don't know what to say on regards to the ice cream building, but I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add other than what you've shared in the past.
Me neither. No, I'm just kidding. I don't know when those conversations took place of the last with Mrs. Bramwell, but our understanding is the new owner's moving forward with some plans for development. So we're waiting to see those plans. I still, I want to make sure that the project gets developed. That's what the- That's what the RDA asked for and why the project moved forward, but I don't want to get lawyered again, I'll probably misspeak, and then we'll be back again next week with the exact words, but that's what the new owners expressed to us, that's what we're hoping for, for the building. That's what I'm waiting for, is to see what the plans are so we can make a decision on next steps. But I don't know when those discussions took place, so if that's changed, we'll, I guess, want to find out, but.
As far as, as far as that contract, I mean, that was signed, I don't know how many years ago. Is it safe to say that we maybe learned some lessons on our contracts? Maybe, I don't know, or, I don't know, like, as far as whether there's any recourse or what the recourse might be, I don't know, so.
I don't think that the legal requirement went away, so it's still there, and we're still going to hold whoever owns it accountable for the deliverables. That's just what we're doing. So was there anything else?
No, I think there were some comments, but questions, I don't, I think that was the main question, unless there was anything else that anyone caught.
There was a question about the business license not being able to be obtained for neighborhood commercial. I don't know that I really completely understood what she said, but that's what I think I heard her say.
Okay. Sometimes, and I'll just be apologetic, sometimes I'm trying to figure out the answer, and I'm not hearing all the questions on their ass, so if, Heath, if I disregarded your question last week, I might not have heard it, because I might have been trying to think of the answer beforehand or something. So I'd be happy to call Heath after the meeting, too, and see what I can do to figure out the details. It's, there's nothing to hide, I just don't want to give any wrong impression or wrong information.
Sure, sure.
I just had a follow-up question about it. So are there any fines? I've dealt in the past, there's like fines that are imposed on people that aren't following through with their.
Yeah, so, but there's no, that timeline hasn't passed yet, so.
Oh, okay.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just forgot.
We're not at that timeline.
We wouldn't be there in September or November.
Yeah, and it's a short time to complete a project of the nature with the condition of the building, so not sure that that timeline will be met, but if it's not, or if there's a proposal, we're going to evaluate that relative to our city options, so. Yeah. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. All right. Comments for Mayor?
I did want to thank the council, all seven of you came to the fire banquet, and I just wanted to thank you guys for that. It's, I don't think it's common for public safety agencies across the country to have that level of support from their elected officials, so it's, they definitely notice it. I certainly did, and just wanted to thank you for that. And then I wanted to share with you guys an email I got today that kind of stemmed from that evening. So we were, I'm still, I'm still meeting a lot of our employees, but while we were leaving the event, one of the employees came and said, "Hey, I just," she was just in a joking way, "I just want to apologize for my father insinuating, he's kind of pestering me," and he's not a pester, he's a guy that I met recently, and he's an absolute joy to interact with, but it just so happened, and she didn't know this, but her father had texted me during the banquet. I was like, felt like a Small World thing. So his name's Skip, and so Skip wrote me an email today that said, "Ben, thanks for returning my call after the firefighters' award banquet on Thursday evening." For context, he'd had an issue with a, with a tree that had fallen on a lot across the street from him that is owned by the city, and so he was looking for help on how to get some services for that. "By the way, the picture you sent of you and my daughter was great. I'm glad you were able to meet Crystal, his daughter, and her husband Beau. Beau absolutely loves working for the, as a firefighter for Ogden City." And he also, by the way, CC'd Justin Anderson. "Justin, congratulations on your promotion. Thank you for replying to Ben Hubbard so quickly on Thursday evening concerning removal of the tree and with everyone, everything that you had on your plate. That was very impressive. I told Ben Nadolsky about your quick response, and Ben spoke very highly of you and everything you accomplished that day for Ogden City." So Justin was at the event that night, and he was really excited because he'd just come back from coaching baseball. He helps the Leighton Lancers JV baseball team, and they had a big celebration of a, of a life well-served that day as well, and they had just beat Riverton, I think it was that night, top-ranked team in the state. So Justin was flying high that night, and he still made it to the banquet after everything he had done. And so Skip mentions, "Even coaching in Leighton and making it back to the awards banquet. Great teamwork, and Ogden City is in good hands. I think some feedback is due today. Today, Ogden City sent a crew up to remove the big tree on the city property on the corner of Buchanan Avenue and Kahoon Street, which was blown over by the windstorm we had last week. Thank you for that, Justin. I have witnessed city employees work in the area, working in that area over the last 50 years. The team sent by Ogden City to remove the tree today was the very best I have ever seen. The lead on the project, Sam, and the crew were amazed to watch, has not one of them stopped working the entire time. Each one of them worked together as a team, from chainsaw operators to heavy equipment, they functioned together as one unit, but with separate duties. There was no one standing around watching another person work. They were focused and amazing to watch as they worked together. They had to leave to empty the chipper and truck, and the worker that stayed never stopped working. They had to leave to clean up to take care of another project, but would be coming back another day to remove the stumps. I thought you should be aware of the great Ogden City employees and how hard they worked today. Thank you. Thanks to all of you." Skip Warner. I get these emails sometimes, and I want to share them with you guys. This has been my experience in my short tenure as well. I'm just amazed at the caliber of the staff and the, and the character of the people in the building and the way that they work together. It's just, it's just been an incredibly fulfilling experience, so if you could pass that along to Sam and the team. Yeah, just, just amazing staff. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Council member comments? Okay, no council member comments, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion adjourned by Councilmember Hare, second by Vice Chair White. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? We are adjourned.